What problem we want to solve in the world and what we get back from solving it. For me, I call it that lightbulb moment whenever you're seeing somebody and.
You know, it has to be fulfilling for you. It's not fulfilling for everybody else, but you know, it's fulfilling for you. And I always get this, you know, like, oh, you're a management, you should move up, you should do this. Oh, they don't appreciate you. I don't care if they don't appreciate you. I know I'm doing what I love to do. And I just happen to land in a position now that they appreciate what I do. And it's all one for all package for me.
That's one main thing I told my kids is that you have to find what you're passionate about. Then work isn't work.
And the other part I would assume gets easier, which is working in a field that where women are tend to be underrepresented. And so I have one more question that I'd love to hear if anyone from the group has questions, which is. So you all, so all of the panelists here obviously work in careers where women are probably few and far between. Hopefully that's changing, but I'd love to hear a little bit about, you know, how do you deal with those situations? Like what sort of gears you up for, okay, I'm about to go into a room where I may be the only woman in the room. Or every day I go in and I'm one of two or three women in the building. So how do you, how did you sort of approach maybe throughout your careers, sort of working in that environment? And had any sort of recommendations that you might have for folks who are thinking about heading into a career where they may not have mentors around who look like them?
I would start out by saying ultimately across the board, but especially in scenarios where it's still to this day, being the only female in various meetings. It's preparedness. It is really, really that preparedness. It's you, you are, you have gone through and you've done the training and obtained your academic degrees in this area. So you own that unapologetically. And you store that confidence and you keep it as part of your guide. And along with that balance and have that person to go to, to hash things out, even rehearse. But that preparedness along with that confidence is the key. Because once you're prepared and you can, you can be a part of that solution for the project that's at hand. And if you, if you always know and understand this, if you're in that meeting, you are probably two times more qualified than everybody in the room. And being a crazy Brooklyn, New York girl. Like no one's business. My first job, I walked into the office. The secretary gave me a box, you know, the pen, the staple, the paper clips, the box. And I went to try to put the paper clips away and then the boss came and said, here, it was a set of specifications and plans to go out and do a $29 million pipeline installation in Brooklyn, New York, Atlantic and Flatfish Avenue. And that was my training. All I knew was there was a desk. So if they moved the office around, I wouldn't have found that desk again. But ultimately, it was just that fast, fast approach to say, you have gone to school for this. You've done the work. You've gone out and done your extra reading to shore you up. So I had to take these plans and go out and meet the contractor with these guys that didn't want you there. And to the point where, why are you here? Well, that was the, that was kind of the wind beneath my sails. Because when it came down to, he would purposely not respect what was in the specs and just not have any regard because I was a female on the project. And so I let him do everything wrong. And when it was time for payment, I made him excavate the entire 10 blocks. And from that moment on, I never had any problems from him. And I guess he spread the word because I never had any. But that preparedness is the ultimate one thing I would, I would throw out at this moment.
I think it's embedded in our genes, no matter what race, what culture, does not matter. If you're a man, you do, you're the caveman. Give me what I need. You don't know, we got the power, we're strength. And it's like, oh, well, you're a woman. So we've been, society has been taught like, oh, you stay home, you're the calm, you take everything. And you just don't know too much. Yeah, you can't know more than them. But again, you wouldn't be where you are if it wasn't for us. Because I believe we get you up in the morning, we get you straight, you know, just the simple things. So for me, when I get sent into a meeting and I'm the only woman, first of all, they all look at me and they're like, okay. First of all, it's the hair color. Because it changes like every two or three months. I'm like, yeah, I'm here. And I'm like, okay. Because I feel like this shouldn't dictate what I do in my job. So a lot of them will, especially when you're in a meeting with the company that wants to start an apprenticeship program. And then you have the related instruction provider. And both of them think they know more about apprenticeship. But I'm here to tell you, no, this is what the state regulates, da-da-da-da. I'm the guru for them. So I let them go back and forth. And I just, I, a lot of times I sit in meetings and let everybody else go. And then they go, so what do you think? I'm going, well, you're wrong, you're wrong. You're partly right. And it's like, well, this is how it's done. And it's kind of fun for me to put out all this information. And then I'm like, wait a minute, and this girl knows her stuff. And it's like, well, was I not supposed to? You know, so that whole shocking assback is fun for me. But I was also, I'm a tomboy at heart. Yes, I don't like to dress up. I'd rather be in sweatpants and a tee shirt all day, baseball cap, and let me go. But you have to be presentable, so I have to throw on something. But I was raised, I was raised with five uncles. They were all military based. You know, my brother went into the military. I'm the only female in my family that went into the military. And I loved it. I loved the physical aspect of it. I even thought about becoming a fireman because I was like, oh, my brother did it, and I'm gonna do it. And he was younger than me. So, and, and being that my family was firemen, and I think I dated a fireman, I think, I did like four firemen. And my friend was like, what is up with you and the firemen? I'm like, ah, it just happens that way, you know? And then, you know, the cops and, and I was, all the men in my family, I was pretty much everybody's favorite niece or, you know, sister. It was one of those things like, because I was a tomboy. I was a female, but I was a tomboy. So they could just joke around me. And being in the military, we kind of say anything out of our mouth. And I'm trying to tame that now. So I, I worked, my, my director and supervisor were both, are both veterans. So when I talk to them, they don't look at me, oh, she's a woman. They look at me as a soldier who is prepared. Because when I talk to them, we can talk in that military jargon and it's done. They don't have any question about what I'm telling them because they know how I was trained. They know that military life. And so they understand me on a different level. So I've been blessed to have that in my life. So I don't, they're the ones that like to mess with everybody else and they go, hey Gina, go in there and see what's going on. Okay. I'm the one that's the daredevil. So they have fun with that, but I come back and I, don't get me wrong, I come across it a lot as a woman, like, oh, okay, why is she here? I have one sponsor who literally, I was standing right there asking him questions. And he refused to answer them. He answered to the, my coworker that was with me, because he was a man. My coworker looked at me and was like, didn't you ask that question? I said, hmm. I said, it's okay. I said, I'm used to it. I said, but in the end, he knows he has to work with me. So when he kind of stepped out and he was like, so, I was wondering if you could tell me this person. No, no, I can give you that information. So it kind of forces those type of people, when I say those, that mentality, to deal with what they don't want to deal with. Whether they want to or not, used to, whatever. So you have to assert yourself and be confident and be knowledgeable, no matter what field you're in. It's like, if you know your stuff, you show it. Don't ever hide. Say, okay, well, let him know. You let them as far as, go ahead. Like you said, go ahead and do that. Now that you're coming back, you have to escalate all that because you were wrong. So it's kind of, you know, soft, what is it?
Passive and passive.
Old terms is soft, soft. Soft like makes for, no, hard head makes for a soft butt. When you fall on it, it's gonna hurt. So sometimes you, and that's not just what men, even with women, sometimes you just have to fall on the leg to learn.
Yeah. Janice nodding along.
In the computer science department, there are about 60 faculty members, because we're a huge department. But we have five women. And so that's, but we, in the undergraduate program, we are up to 20% women. So I'm seeing some hope. We've come from 11% all the way up to 20 while I've been there. But I would say, besides being prepared, the most important thing, I think, is knowing who you are. That having somebody say, this is how you should do this, and this is how you should do this. Each person manages things differently. And finding your own way and being true to how you do things is, I think, the most important, to show that confidence. You know, that just because the men or the other managers are acting like this, that doesn't mean you have to. Because different management styles do work for different people, as long as you know who you are. And I think the same goes for teaching styles, the same goes for programming styles. You know, that if you find, find out who you are, you can do so much more, as long as you're prepared with whatever angle you're taking.
Yeah, big word right now is authenticity, right? Like being true to yourself, even in those moments where people are sort of trying to push you into being someone else.
I think, you know, for, for me in fire rescue, one of the things that's a little bit different, you know, from some of my peers up here is that you can, a person can come into fire rescue at ground zero with just a high school education. You don't need to have any college. You do need to have college as you advance, and if you want certain levels of promotion, you do need to have some college. But you don't actually need to have a college degree. So you can come in, everybody comes in really at the same starting point, which is, which is nothing. And, you know, the department provides the training. And, you know, so the journey there in terms of, you know, in, you know, clearly a male dominated, we have in Montgomery County, a little less than 5% females right now. So that's in a department of about 1,300 people. So I know that certainly, you know, it sort of ebbs and flows, which probably everybody would agree with, like much of, you know, things that happen in life. You know, and some of my, my female firefighters, because we do kind of band together a little bit. You know, there's always been sort of an underlying sense of, I'm gonna have to do like 150% so that I can look like I'm doing their 75%. So, you know, the average firefighter who's cooking along at a C plus, B minus, you know, which is, you know, it's just that, it's a C plus, B minus. You know, the females, you know, for, at different points in your career, if you want, you know, depending on what you want, you know, you're gonna have to, you're just gonna have to perform at 150% all the time in order to get the credit for being that, I'll say maybe 80 or 90% firefighter. And, you know, I've found that at just really different levels of, you know, in terms of the rank structure and so forth. You know, in the very beginning, when I got hired, even though it was, you know, mid 90s, you know, my first station was, you know, the captain wouldn't talk to me. He would just say, somebody tell her to, whatever. He wouldn't, he just wouldn't talk to me, couldn't stand having me on the truck with him. It was, but, you know, that was, it was temporary, you know. I, we, we got each other over it. But, you know, there was definitely that, you know, don't like having women here, I don't want you here. I gotta expect, accept you, so, you know, okay, but, you know, sort of finding your place of, you know, I'm here, I'm gonna stick around, I'm not leaving. So I'm gonna stay and we're gonna figure out how to make this work together. And part of that is, you know, preparedness, it's knowing yourself, it's all those things that you guys have talked about too, in terms of, you know, I, I like the preparedness and, you know, that spoke to me in terms of, you know, I have found throughout my career, I've just, I've got to be that much better at my job. I've got to know it that much more, you know, to, you know, to kind of be on par with my male counterparts of the same rank. And never, you know, you can't, when, if you're, if you're having a moment, go to the, as we affectionately call it, the ladies conference room, otherwise known as the locker room. Go to the ladies conference room, phone a friend, and, you know, have your moment in there. And then, you know, wash your face, dry your eyes, go back out and do the job. You know, and there's been plenty of that. I remember, you know, sort of a moment for me that was really awesome was I had just, just gotten promoted to captain. And I was assigned to a station where not everybody was all that pleased to have me there as their officer. That's okay. You know, we were, we were making progress, we were doing some good stuff. And we, we had a house fire. And one of the things that you have to do in, you know, usually after you've put the bulk of the fire out, we still always want to make sure there's no, like what we call hotspots or areas that are gonna rekindle the fire. So we, we usually pull the drywall down, sometimes we pull ceilings down and get behind the walls and make sure there are none of these hotspots that are gonna cause that rekindle. It is the worst work in firefighting. Nobody wants to pull ceilings and walls. It's just, it's no fun. The fire's already out, you already had the fun of putting the fire out. It's just like, it's total drudgery.
It's like cleaning up.
It's totally cleaning up and it's hard work. I mean, it's super hard work. You gotta wear your breathing apparatus because there's all kinds of carcinogens still floating around. And, you know, nobody wants to do it. Anyhow, we're upstairs on the second floor of this, of this house where the house had been on fire. My crew has been assigned to pull ceilings and walls in this one particular area. And the battalion chief came up, and he was a guy who I had maybe not quite seen eye to eye with on a couple of previous occasions. You know, we had definitely butted heads and, you know, he's battalion chief, so he won. But, and, and, you know, we, it wasn't particularly, you know, wasn't, I, I thought, you know, I was wrong. I mean, I thought it was like not a good relationship. I didn't really feel like I cared for that guy. I knew he didn't care for me. And now he's coming up to supervise me and my crew. And we're pulling ceilings and walls, and it's hard work. And I've got a couple guys on my shift who are still in, you know, still a little bit doubtful. So you know I am not putting down any hooks, I'm not putting down a tool, I don't care how bad I feel. I'm not putting down the tool, no matter what. And the battalion chief comes up and a few minutes later, he says to one of the guys who was definitely doubting me, and he says, hey, what's the matter, Macalifresh? New captain kicking your ass? And so I went to talk with him afterwards. I was like, hey, thanks for that. And he goes, thanks for what? You know, and he's like, you did it. I didn't do it. I wasn't pulling the walls. And I was like, well, I guess I kind of thought that, you know, we didn't have, we kind of had a little adversarial relationship. And he goes, you know, and he, he basically just said, no, you know, you're, you're a strong leader, you're a good leader. And I don't like what you did in those other instances, but I treated you the same as I would have treated any of the other guys. Which as I thought about it in retrospect, he totally did. And I didn't necessarily take it as a male, female thing, but, you know, throughout my career, I think I've had those opportunities. And as, you know, you, you know, like, you know, Naomi, your first project where you were like, okay, I told you how it should be done. You didn't do it that way. Guess what? Now we gotta go back. You know, there are, even though there were, you know, my first captain who wouldn't talk to me directly, but there were those people. And, you know, once you kind of get in there, you know, you've got, whether they're female mentors or male mentors. It's, it really doesn't matter. But you've got those go-to people, the people who, you know, they got your back. And, you know, they, it just, it sort of happens in a different way. It's not a lot of, you know, a lot of hand-holding and, oh, Beth, you're doing a great job. We love you so much. And you're not gonna really get that. You know, you're, it's, you're gonna get that reinforcement, but just in a different way. Maybe as women, I think we, you know, I find, you know, you kind of gotta be in a place where you're ready to hear that in a different way. Because you're gonna, you're gonna get that support most of the time. But you're gonna hear it a little differently than we might normally be ready to hear it or be expect to hear it.
Having somebody who acknowledges, you know, and your place in this environment is really important. One story I have like that is, I went to Afghanistan and I was going to be teaching the professors of computer science. And I was worried about how professors in Afghanistan, who there are no women, very few women professors, and even fewer in the computer science department, which is none. And so I was, I was worried about how they would accept me. And when I was introduced, the chair of the department, because this very old, very traditional man, walked across the room and shook my hand with both of his to make it clear that I would be treated, you know, like, yeah. And that, I think, set the tone. And I worked with those professors over the next six years. And we never had an issue of the gender difference.
Those moments are powerful.
I think when it comes to gender, the gender difference, like you said, when he made that point to say, hey, is she, you know, putting you to work, she's pretty much in those, that's their way of saying, hey, good job. So when you hear things like that, you just go, okay, they're giving me a gold star. I've learned that. And I understand, like, even going into the military, everybody has to do basic training. If you have rank coming in, it's because you have some college credits, but that means nothing. You still have to do the training. Everything that everybody else does, no matter what rank they are, you have to do it. So there's no, oh, you have rank, or you're a woman, or you're a man. No. You're doing this training because you have to. It's required of everyone. And through my careers, I've always said, I will never ask you to do something I haven't done myself or wouldn't do myself. So I think you getting in there and, you know, going to head to head with everybody else, like pulling down those walls, pulling down those ceilings, sometimes you have to do that not only to show them that you can do it, but also to show them, I'm no different than you. You know, and, and that speaks more than words.
Any questions for the herd?
I have a lot of questions. It's funny, just what you were talking about with the, I don't know, a couple, a lot of things resonated with me. I'm a lawyer. I've been out of the field for about 10 years. I just decided I couldn't be at a firm and raise kids at the same time. It just wasn't gonna happen. So it's just funny, as you were talking, I was just thinking, there's just this little voice of doubt that always comes up. And I guess the preparation helps you to just put that voice aside. But I feel like I'm in that situation again where it's like, they're gonna, you know, I've been out of the workforce for 10 years. I don't know, but it's just you have to push that voice aside.
You have to push it aside. It never completely goes away though.
You're more than qualified.
Right. Once you just get back into doing it, it was routine, but sometimes you have to go in the bathroom and you have to do. I, I went to, and I, and I take this from a class that I went to, it was a motivator speaker, and she did all the stuff, and she says, and this was for Darla, so it was a man and a woman. And then she goes, sometimes you have to go in the bathroom and just do your Wonder Woman stance and go, you know what? I got this. You're good, you're prepared, you know this. So what, you haven't done it for a few years, but you know what? I can still do that. I mean, I can even do it as fast as I'm, you can still do it. Yes. I wonder, I hear me wrong. And, you know, I take that because, because don't get me wrong. Every time I go into a meeting and every time I wake up in the morning, I have to do that to myself. You know what, Gina? It's a new day. Get up on your game. Even my alarm clock says, hey, wake up, it's time to start the day. The first step to becoming a superstar is rolling out of bed. So with that being said to me, I hear that in the morning, I'm like, are you freaking kidding? Even days I don't want to get up, I'm like, Alexa, shut up. And she just keeps going because, you know, you have to do these commands. And then I'm like, okay, stop. And then I'm like, get up. She's right, you know, you changed the alarm to be motivating, so you need to do it. So it, you, sometimes, we are our worst enemies. And it's not just women, it's everybody, you know, you doubt yourself. So sometimes you just have to know how to say, you know what? I'm the only one saying that I can't do this, or I may mess up, you know? But it's fun to mess up because then you learn what you don't know and you can learn a different way of doing it. So, I mean, I take every experience I have as a learning experience.
I like going into the bathroom and instead of crying, pulling the Wonder Woman's stand.
Wonder Woman is a winner. She was always my favorite, so.
My too. But also with the doubt, one thing that literature shows is that women tend to doubt themselves more than men. So, and men, even if they do doubt themselves, are better at posturing. They're better at pretending they know what they know what they're doing. So between the two, women often feel less prepared, only because they're using their own self-evaluation of that. Men don't know how to do it as well.
I have a really good friend, I have a really good friend who, she's an assistant chief. She's our only female assistant chief. And she and I have kind of gone up together. You know, she's got this, this phrase that I love about an educated bluff, which sort of speaks to that too. Like, you know, you basically, you've got the groundwork, you know a lot. And, and it's sort of, it's the same thing of, you know, what the men have of, they're just gonna go forth and say it. They don't always know. They're just gonna do it. And it's that educated bluff of, I'm gonna talk like I know what I'm talking about until you prove me wrong. And then I'm gonna go, oh, that's, okay, that's awesome, that's good information. And then, and I'm gonna steer right around it and keep on going. But, you know, to develop that, sort of the language that works for you, for each of us as individuals. We all have our own, you know, way of speaking, but to find that language that sort of, you know, I like that phrase of an educated bluff, it really worked for me when she first, you know, brought it to me. And I'm like, oh my gosh, that's totally it. There have been so many times, you know, in my career where, like, and in my head, I'm going, girl, what are you talking about? And then the other voice goes, well, they're buying it, aren't they? And sort of finding that place, and as I've gone getting higher in the ranks, which, you know, I think we're all sort of in those places too of, you know, particularly because I do deal mostly with men. And mostly in this, you know, at different, you know, in rank structures, of giving direction to men, in, in finding that right balance of giving direction that is, you know, that indicates that I'm the supervisor and I'm the person giving you that direction, where they're not gonna turn around and go, bitch. Or, you know, or I'm too, now, you know, if you don't mind, would you please? You know, so you gotta kind of find that balance of, you know, I'm gonna, you know, I'm just, just neutral and professional. I'm gonna give you this instruction, I'm gonna say it in such a way that you know what that expectation is. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not your mom, you know, I'm not your sister, I'm not holding your hand. But I'm also not, I'm not being, you know, bitchy about it. But, you know, and I, to me, like the whole educated bluff and all of that kind of language, I think, you know, what words work for you to get you to those points that you want to be. And that's different for each of us, but finding that, practicing it, rehearsing it, sort of. And going, ooh, that didn't work so well, did it? Okay, you know, dial that one back, try, try something else.
I use it a lot with my daughter. You know, I'm saying, what you think you are doing that I don't know, believe me, I know because I've done it better than you because I didn't get caught. And she's like, okay, so she knows my every move now. And she does not live with me. She has her own things. And it's, it's kind of funny how that's, that kind of saying still resonates for her. She's like, okay, well, mom is still watching. Whatever I do, I know she's gonna find out. And I'm like, sometimes I don't even know, but you ask the right questions or you say the right thing, pretty much, you know, they spit it out. And, and it's kind of funny because you go, see, I just need to talk a little bit. And she's a psychology student. She graduated with a psychology degree. And she actually started me on this little thing in the morning and around my house because I walk into an apartment and, you know, all those paintings that have all the funky little fun sayings and motivational things. I walked into her apartment, and then she had one on her mirror in the bathroom. And basically, it was like a post-it that said how great she was and like all her, her great aspects. Like all her, the ones, things that she thought was wonderful about her. And so I was like, I really love that. You know, that, and I started to do things like that. I'm going, you know what? Not that I needed it, but we do need it. Not like, you know, for her, she was like, nope, I'm going to stay focused. And like her goals for the day. She's one of those people that write down everything, her day is planned. And I'm like, oh my gosh, she like writes down finances. I'm going, I know at one point in life I was like that because I didn't study finance. So I'm going, but I, I just can't get as detailed as you do. This is a little anal. But you know what? Hey, I'd rather that she be that organized, really functional person that I'm kind of scatterbrained on. And it's fun when you sit back and you can take things that you know you set in, somebody like that foundation, those morals, and, and be able to still use them, even though you gave it to them, you can use it again. So it, it's, it's definitely one of those steps that we have to, we have to be able to say, yes, I can do this. Pat ourselves on the shoulder, you know, on the back. we have to, we have to be able to say, yes, I can do this. Pat ourselves on the shoulder, you know, on the back. That's, that's
It's okay.
Big requirement, 'cause it helped me push through those, those different walls that's around every phone, every other phone call, or every other situation that blows up here or there. So if you have a good storage of that, you're just like, ooh, saw, and you focus on it, get it solved, and you figure, I was just whining about how tired, I just made a spa, I need to go on vacation. But that, 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 uh, motivation that you've stored up and that power that you know you, you have, all of a sudden, something kicks in, and it's like, wow, okay, that worked.
Psychological work there. A lot of, um, as women, we tend to do a lot of, um, you know, with that whole self-doubt thing. And sometimes I've found, I'm totally guilty of this, um, you know, I'll, I'll focus on one little aspect of something that didn't go right, and I'm like, oh my gosh, you know, whatever. And I, I, I just spend way too much energy on that, and, you know, to kind of try to zoom out and, you know, score yourself like legitimately, okay, yeah, guess what, that part didn't go the way you wanted it to, but by and large, the project, or whatever it is. I had a captain when I worked over at this station right here in Rockville, and, um, I was a brand-new lieutenant. I was his brand-new lieutenant. I really wanted to work with that guy, great, great, great captain. Not fuzzy and warm at all, very stone-faced, but it really, anyhow. He was gone during the day, he had, was teaching some classes, he came back in the late afternoon. It was a super busy day, I had this long list of things. And I met him in the engine room, and he kind of saw the list, and he looked up, he saw me with the list, he looks at the list, and I can see his face, it's like, oh gosh, what's on this stupid list? And I start to go, and he says, uh, he goes, did you kill anybody? Nope. Did you have to send anybody home? Nope. Did you break anything that cost a lot of money? Nope. All right, you did fine. So, you know, uh, just sort of like, let's find a perspective here. None of those great big things happened. It's fine, it's all good, we'll figure out the rest later. And, you know, that, that's always been a good one that sticks in my mind, to try to remind me, don't get hyper-focused on little things. Even if they did go wrong, you know, figure them out and learn from them, but don't, you know, as women, I think, we do tend to kind of get super hyper-focused on something I did wrong, you know, and, you know, we should, we shouldn't do it.
Take that over, think it.
Yeah, exactly. Any other questions from the group? We have time for one more question?
I, I, yeah, um, so, okay, so there's, there's the self-doubt, but then there's also sexual harassment, which is a whole different story. How have you, have you dealt with any of that in the workforce?
Yes and no. More on a positive note than anything else, because, no, most of the guys I work with, what society considers sexual harassment, because of my upbringing, I don't consider that sexual harassment. It's only sexual harassment when it offends you. So it's more, it depends on the person. You know, that's, and for me, I'm not offended by much, you know, filth, phom, phom, filth, I'm glad she's the one swearing, because then I don't feel so bad. But again, um, I was raised with a military background, and being in the military, and being around people that were in industries that, you know, a lot of jokes come out of, you know, their mouths. I've learned some really good ones, whether, you know, and I'm, and and I'm multicultural. I mean, my, my mom is from Thailand, my dad is black and Portuguese. We grew up in an all-black neighborhood, so, I mean, I only see green. You know, 'cause of that military background, but when I say green, I want to see money. You know, are you paying my bills? Are you, you know, are you causing me a financial burden? Then it doesn't matter to me, you're irrelevant, you know, 'cause I need to take care of me before I can do anything else. So I've never had the issue, I think, 'cause I walk in with a very strong personality and say, you know what? I'm okay with the jokes, you know, but as long as you're not coming at me in a negative tone, we will never have a problem. If we're all sitting around joking, fine, as long as we all know we are joking, I'm on a good page, so.
I mean, I think that we all know is an important aspect, 'cause even if you aren't offended by it, if other people overhear it,
Yeah.
that can be a big issue too. So I've had to deal with some cases of helping students through things. And, um, it is a balance between having a strong personality and not letting that thing that probably didn't mean anything to the, or might not have meant anything to the person who's having it, you know? But also the knowing how to, what, I don't know, chain of command isn't the right word, but who to see, who you can talk to about it, because there are cases where the, the culture of the office gets so bad, that even though the person who they're directing things at doesn't feel anything, the other people have such a negative attitude in the office that, you know, losing them from the field. And I think having a structure of, in every office, of who to talk to, who to, you know, that everybody knows who that is, is really important.
And I think that's what it is, you know, that I've always come in like, okay, I know you're one of the good old boys, I can expect to hear anything out your mouth. It's not gonna offend me if you're not coming from a negative place. So I kind of, for me, I kind of already put that out there, like, I'm not a stickler, I'm kind of laid-back, it is what it is. But I remember I started this position, um, back in Boston, the company was very small. And in the main office was the owner, the owner's secretary, the owner's wife, who was the lawyer for the company, and then the finance manager, and myself, and I'm starting, you know, oh, and the purchasing, and just like, and mind you, we are all women, all the men are in the bag, doing all the product making and stuff like that. And the owner, he comes out and he says, he stands at his door, and I mind you, I can hear him, 'cause we're all, he goes, but he's talking to everybody in the office, but doesn't, I don't even think he realized I was there. Or probably forgot, and he goes, hey, what are we doing for lunch? Are we going down to, to the chinks down on this street, or, um, the Greeks down here? And I came out and it, everybody was just quiet, and I think it was because they knew I was there, and they're going, oh my god, and I mind you, it's a all-white office. I walked out, said, which chinks are you talking about? Are you talking about the ones that are over here, or the ones that are over there? He goes, because the way he said it was that, he knew what he wanted to eat, he didn't mean anything by it, and he goes, which ones? I was like, well, the ones out here are Vietnamese, and they do more soups, and he said, that's the place I'm talking about. But he just didn't know how to
Vietnamese or Chinese?
Chinese, like, or you're talking about the Chinese food place, but I knew what he was talking about, because I was so used to it. But when I came out and sat and engaged with him, I, it, I saw the light bulb go off in his head, go, ooh, I could have been offensive right there. And I said, you know what? I knew you were talking about food, and you're used to coming out in your office, but now I'm here, so, you know, I'm not offended, and, and he pretty much was like, you know what? I have to curb the way I think. And he pulled me into office, said, I thank you for that. He goes, you, you checked me, but on the nicest way possible. And I'm like, I wasn't offended, I knew what you were talking about, but yeah, it's, I was like, it's not okay. If you're gonna call somebody a chink, at least call them Chinese, Korean, Thai, I was like, I'm, I'm like, no. We're not all the same. And he's like, oh, okay. But, you know, that's just his culture, and at the age he was at, he was, you know, that's just his way, so. Sometimes you just have to let people know, because they don't, they don't know, and, um, they would do better if they knew better, so.
Well, and, and I think, like, we're seeing, a lot, we're seeing it play out now, right, with this Titan in the entertainment space with Harvey Weinstein, finally being called on something he's been doing for years and years and years, and it's, it's, it's shocking to me that only now are some of these really big-name people speaking out. And this, and they're saying, oh, we knew about this forever, and it's like, well, what if, if you had spoken out back then, you could have maybe stopped this, or you could have helped some people who didn't have the power that you have. But on the other hand, this is a very personal thing, and he's a very powerful person. If she had been, you know, you know, personally offended or assaulted, that's, it's, it's very difficult, even if you are Gwyneth Paltrow, to come up and say, wait a minute, you did something wrong, and I'm gonna, you know, hold you to it. So it's just one of those things of like the power dynamic, and, and, and it could like, sort of breed this culture of, everyone stays quiet, we all know what's happening, but we're just gonna let it happen. And so figuring out a way to say, can we carve out a safe space somehow? Is there someone who could, who we can go to and talk to about this? Or is there some way that I can, you know, take this outside of this space and consult someone externally, and an attorney even, um, to talk through this issue and figure out what my options are? I mean, it's just such a, and, and so it's amazing that we're seeing this really play out right now in a place where there are a lot of really powerful people who probably could have said something, but even they stay quiet for years and years and years, and allow it to happen to other people, so.
And the, the Fox News guy, I mean, that just happened a couple months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think social media has enabled a lot of people to actually speak up, because it's just out there now. Where before, we didn't have all these avenues, like Twitter and all that Snapchat and stuff. I'm still like, honey, can you put this on my phone? I have no idea where that is. Can you figure that out for me? And, um, and even Facebook, you know? And for me, I just don't pay attention to social media as much, because there's so much junk out there. And I don't mean fake news, I mean, people just putting their business out there. I don't wanna know, I don't care, you know? I don't wanna see everything you ate for the day. I don't want you, you know, yes, you're having issues in your life, but when you see the whole, I put this issue out there, and then people comment on it, and then you're bashing the people for commenting. Well, if you don't want anybody to make a comment, then nobody out there. So I just go, you know what? I've learned to curve what I put on social media. And it's usually more like the positive, fun stuff, and like, oh, did you know this area has this, or, you know, and I use it for a lot for work and just promoting myself, so that there's more positive energy out there than negative, so.
I think in fire, sorry, go ahead, Jen.
But in addition to the social media stuff, I think the structure of reporting things like sexual harassment and things like that in the workplace has changed a lot over the last decade, that it's now published in any organization, what, who you can report to, what the requirements are, and, and the definitions. So people aren't just questioning, was this something meant just in fun, or is this something I should be responding to?
Well, and I think that, you know, in, in fire rescue, certainly, you know, the culture, the male, strongly male-dominated culture, you know, along with just, you know, sort of culturally what firefighters sort of are, um, you know, there's just, you know, trying to work towards a shift in, look, this is a profession, we're professionals, and we have to set an expectation of behavior in the fire station that's appropriate for everybody. Um, and, you know, and so, you know, working to do that, I mean, it takes a lot of courage, I think, in a lot of, um, settings. You know, and, and, you know, probably, you know, Gwyneth Paltrow is a great example in terms of, you know, we wanna say, I wish she had had the courage to do that, but when you feel like you're the only person, and you have no support, you know, mustering that courage to go forth i- is a difficult thing. And I think for us in fire rescue, I know, you know, we've been really doing a lot of work in terms of, you know, we need to see ourselves as professionals and set our own expectations for professional work behavior. It, just because we're firefighters doesn't mean we can behave like thugs and, you know, and idiots. You know, we have to behave like professionals if we wanna be taken seriously. We've gotta behave like that, and we need to, to, to do that in the station, and it's a really important thing to do. And, you know, sort of along the lines too of what you guys were saying, you know, uh, Jan, I think you brought up, you know, other people can be offended by something, even if, if, you know, I'm not the person, say, offended. If somebody else hears me, that's, that, that constitutes, or could possibly constitute an EEO complaint as well. And, you know, a person's, you know, the intent versus the impact of, of a statement, or, or an action, or whatever, is so, so important. And I get a lot of that in my office in the discipline arena, why didn't mean, you know? I only meant that, you know, dot, 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 uh, you know, so, and, you know, I spend a lot of time talking with the guys who come in about, you know, that difference, that space between what you're telling me your intent was, but what the impact on that other individual or group of individuals was, was, was different than what you're portraying to me now. And as a professional and an adult in a work setting, this is what matters, is your impact on that person or group of people was such that, that now you're sitting in my office, you're, you're, you're in a disciplinary process because of what those actions were. And, you know, as a department, we have to take that seriously, and, and, you know, both train on the proactive side and, and help them understand what's reasonable, appropriate behavior. And sometimes we have to also share some consequences with them, you know, when they don't meet those expectations. But, you know, intent and impact, I, I find, you know, that the space between those two things is sometimes really wide.
And teaching college students of the intent versus the impact, and getting them to always think on the impact side is
Right.
Because they're informing them, they're acting on it, so it's based on individuals and their interpretation of these rules and how they're gonna handle it. So sometimes I, um, dealing with the fire department in the way that I have, um, I was fortunate to see in Boston, the transition of them welcoming women into that, to that industry. So I've seen the new firehouses go up where they're putting in the women's bathrooms, and, you know, doing all of these things. And I was fortunate to be at, um, I was, when I was dating this guy, I was at his firehouse, and one of the new firefighters came in, and she was a woman. And I'm like, oh, great, I'm glad to see a woman in here, da-da-da. He was like, I think it'll add, actually add to our firehouse. And I was like, hey, he's like, yeah, we had to put in this bathroom. And I heard the guys basically bitching about the whole thing. But once she got there, I saw the transformation that they took. Not the fact that she, they doubted what she could do, but they took, and I saw the positive change of, you know what? She went through that training, we did, she did, 'cause they know the training, 'cause they had to go through it. So they're like, you know what? Let's see, you know, it's more so, let's see if she can, you know, make this happen. And they actually supported her, like, oh, do you need it? I'm like, but you can't, certain fields you can't do that. And I used to tell the guy I was dating, I was like, don't open a door for her, don't offer to pick up her stuff, and it, you wouldn't offer to pick up Buddy's stuff, would you? He's like, no. I'm like, okay, she's your coworker, she's your team member, you know what I mean? It's not that she can't do it, and, but you're in your job setting. You know, you're not expected to doubt if she can do it, you know, because she got the job. So he took that as, okay, I can't be a gentleman to this woman. And I'm like, you can, but you can't. And also, I helped him with that transition, but as that firehouse trans, you know, the transition of having her there, it was definitely a positive, like, we welcome you. And, um, she was like, no, I'm a cook, I'll be on the rotation. And she just, I saw her put herself in. You know, like, nope, put me on that rotation, nope, put me on that list, put me on this. She wanted to get involved because she was the newbie, so she was like, you know what? I'm just here to say, hey, I'm here, and introduce myself. Type of attitude is how she came into it, not, I'm a, a woman on the job. It's, I'm new to this house, let, let me introduce myself. So it, it was definitely a positive thing, and over the years, I've seen it grow, and I can honestly say that from the Boston Fire Department aspect, um, my opinion, they have definitely welcomed it. Yes, there are gonna be some people who are like, ah, I don't want her over my, I don't wanna have to do all that, we don't wanna make those changes, 'cause they just don't wanna change. They don't wanna make the, um, what is it, the requirements for them, you know? So that's like with women in infantry in the military, they're like, yeah, that means we have to bring this, we have to bring that, because if you're out there more than a month, of course, we have to supply for the feminine needs, and it's like, okay, so you don't wanna cater to us, but you want us out there, you know, so. It's, it's a hit or miss with some issues, so.
So with the time that we have left, I think we're just over an hour. Um, unless there are any other questions from the group, I have one final question. Uh, and this actually steers us back to the career side, 'cause this sort of panels a little bit about women in underrepresented fields, and what is it like to be in that space, and what should I prepare myself for? Should I enter into a space, uh, into a field where I may be the only woman in the room? Uh, but the other side is, I'm looking to, you know, come back into the workforce, or get into the workforce. And so I'd love to hear from you, um, any thoughts that you have on, because you've hired people, I'm sure, you've maybe coached people as they're preparing to go into jobs, um, you've worked on the employer side, um, as, as maybe a liaison. So for someone who's thinking about getting into your field, or into a career sort of in your space, what are some suggestions that you could give? Whether they're just kind of coming out of school, or someone who was, maybe is moving, um, from one career into a career in your space. Are there any things that you've seen that have worked really well, or, or channels, avenues that you could recommend?
Well, I guess I'll take this one first. The, um, computer science, they estimate there are going to be 10,000 jobs in the next five years that we will not be able to fill with the people that are trained. Cybersecurity is even worse, as far as we cannot produce enough people. And so therefore, there are, um, a plethora of avenues of how to get into this field. From informal training that's available, to, um, uh, night school, to regular college, to, um, learning a, some, uh, basic to, um, learning a, some, uh, basic skill, you know? We have across the whole board of different ways to get into this field. And the nice thing about this field is because there are so many open positions, if you get in one way, and then you decide that's not exactly what you wanna be doing, it's easy to do different training and get to someplace else, you know, because there's so much open, there's so, so many jobs open, that the freedom of finding what you're passionate about, and doing whatever training is needed to get there is so easy. And so basically, all you have to do is make the first step of getting into the field, and then you see how much more is in the field. And it's just like a, like lots of different, um, branches every time you take a step. That I find very exciting for computer science.
Yeah, low barrier to entry, sort of walk right in. If you're willing to do the work of getting, you know, even one skill, to get in the door, then you can cut it off, that's great.
I think, you know, for fire rescue, um, probably the, the best and easiest thing you can do is go for a couple ride-alongs. Um, you know, connect with somebody, me, whomever, wherever you live, you know, try it on for size in a small, you know, small way. If it seems pretty good, you know, you can consider volunteering, or just, but I really, it's such a different thing to do, that, you know, I, I would encourage, you know, like a ride-along, um, at least, you know, a few of them, and kind of just see how, how you or the person that you're talking to, and kind of maybe trying to steer in that direction, you know? Get a little bit of a taste for it, it's a really easy, it's a really easy job to do a ride-along on, you know? You know, where you can definitely kind of see what goes on on a day-to-day basis, that would probably be my best tip.
And can you just call your station to go on a ride-along? Can anyone do it?
Yep, anybody can do it, you can call the station nearest to you, you know, you can just say, I, or I have a friend, somebody in my life who is interested in this as a career, and, you know, I, I heard some gal talking about ride-alongs, and so I wanted to do it. You know, and I would even, I would recommend doing it in a couple of different places, you know, because one of the things that, that is great about this career is, and you guys have also talked about it too, is all the variety. I mean, you can work at a super busy station where it's just go, 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 um, you talked about night work, where you're up all night, and you're like, blah. You know, that's for the young people. And then there are other stations where, you know, it's pretty, pretty quiet, so, you know, you, you go for ride-alongs in a couple different places, and they, you know, kind of like a family unit, stations and shifts have their own feel to them, and you can kind of get the feel of a different one, different one. So if you're just like totally starting from scratch, that's my best advice.
I think that goes for most careers too, is, um, people are usually willing to help you in any way.
Yep.
And just use your networks to have those one-on-one experiences, uh, whether it be an informational interview, or a ride-along, or, you know, just shadowing someone for a day.
Yep, yeah.
For, for, for engineering, it's, it's just, uh, it, you can do the, the two-year, you can do the two-year, um, path, and then transfer over to a four-year, but as, as it relates to the solid getting that degree, it's not even a certification for engineering, so you, you will have to do the, um, the heavy lifting to get through any, any one of the engineering disciplines. But the great news is that, as she shared, it's just jobs, jobs, jobs. And it's, you know, I, I try to mentor and get young people to, to come into the profession, because, you know, our high-paying jobs are going overseas. Um, and it started before Bush Senior. Um, we, as a country, we might put out about, let's say, sixty, it's actually gone down. Uh, we might put out fifty thousand engineers a year. But when you look at whether it's China, Japan, or India, they put out five hundred thousand engineers a year. And so as a, a corporation, I, I have to turn down business, I have to turn down work, because I can't find workers stateside. And so the avenue of our, our jobs of leaving the country, is leaving the country because our current school system, and all its complexities, is just not able to keep our US children rooted to be in the STEM professions. And so that's a domino effect, as you get down the road for these high-paying jobs. I, I, I've been, since July thirty-first, I've been trying to hire someone, now I know I'm paying this person about forty-five dollars an hour, can't give the job away. So ultimately, it, it's crazy, and I don't, I don't have the acumen at this age to even think about sending my work overseas, it's just not my comfort level. My firm is small, and I wanna keep it that way, cause I like to play, you know, that bouncing like thing I said about? It's, 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 it's a real thing. Um, so I decided that, yes, you're running a corporation, and I, I, I've never had any children, so I work and I maintain because I want to give back. But the other component to it, without being able to hire my, uh, staff from the US, in the US, it's just, uh, opportunities galore. And I, and I'm, I'm saying, out of college, you had fifty-five, sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Your first job, so it's a sacrifice, and I gave up partying in New York City for four years. Can you imagine? Who does that? That's crazy. I'm still wondering about my psychological...
I'll give you my daughter's number.
But, and, and when you push through, and, oh, the party, you just gotta say, the parties will be there when I walk out with my engineering degree. So the sacrifice is absolutely richly rewarding and absolutely worth it. And to know you're in a profession that A, pops you out of mom and dad's place right away, pop you into that lifestyle that you see on the videos, or on TV, or whatever, and yet you might keep up with the Kardashians a little bit, but it is just such a rewarding profession overall, and you're challenged. And you know, you, you, you're just going to be well-paid, and looking for a job is just not going to be your thing. You, your jobs are going to be, employers are gonna be looking for you. And so ultimately, now, that's for, uh, starting a career in the engineering profession. But as it relates to, uh, re-entry, uh, that means you already have a foundation experience in the, um, already. The good thing to consider would be looking at starting with a small firm, because then it can coddle you and get you comfortable, comfortable for getting back into industry. But also look at certifications, because there's a lot of, uh, things, because the certification give, take away all that theory, and it get you to that five, six, twelve weeks of what you need to do this job, and a check is waiting for you. So as far as re-entry, you have so many, and then all of the, the major universities have very, very good certification programs that, that's, uh, out there. So that's a way of get, getting yourself fresh again, you already have one, uh, degree already and some experience, that certification will keep you fresh. And, and what I do as a professional, or even a business owner, I just do certifications, some, sometimes, executive certifications, because you always wanna be fresh. I used to, I tell my students, I say, unless your last name is Winfrey, I think it was Open Winfrey and Michael Jordan, I say, unless, unless you are directly related to those two, and you have that trust fund waiting for you, you are not in a position to focus on one thing. And that's, that's the, that's the leading thing that sets you apart from your peers, and make you always prepared to walk in any room with a certain level of, I am gonna be able to fake my way through this, because you have a body of knowledge and different experiences. And so that keeps you always ready, always ready to be on teams that you didn't even imagine, but you're always in some form of being ready.
First step I would say is know your standards, know, know what you're gonna say yes and no to. Just because a position says, we want this, this, and this, doesn't, and you look and you know, well, I'm not qualified, doesn't mean you can't try for it, cause they may want what you know to enhance that position. As, and, and that's whether you're re-entering or, or joining in. For me, I hear from a lot of employers, they're like, either there's not enough people in that field, that I can't, you know, fill the positions, um, people are underqualified, or maybe they're overqualified educationally, but they don't know how to do the job. So, and that's the one thing, um, that workforce development has taken a look at, and that's why they're pushing apprenticeship programs. It's not to say they haven't been around, um, they've been around for years. The biggest one is the military, the fire department, police department, you know, when you go to that cadet school, you're earning while you're in that training, so you're earning to learn the job and get that, and it giving you on-the-job experience. So when employers have that issue, I should say, okay, well, you know what, would you rather, can you afford to hire someone that has no, no knowledge, and send them to school to get them certified in that field? And, um, they look at it like, you know what, that could work for me, because they're like, oh, I'm going to be giving them a job, training them the way I want them to train, and they're getting an education, which has a ninety-one retention rate. Training your employees has a ninety-one, you, you're, you're willing to stay, job seekers are willing to stay with a company if they're always training them, and it could be one class a month, or a year, but they're always giving some updated knowledge on how to do their job. With that being said, it's also with the job seekers, I go, just because you don't see women in it, doesn't mean there aren't any. Or, or that's not an avenue you can't take. Especially when it comes to the traditional trades, um, again, construction, ironworker, electrician, all of those fields, these guys are making like a good minimum, what, sixty, seventy a year as a journey person, you know? And that's not even going up in, in the ranks, it's, okay, I finished my classes, and I'm starting out at this. So with that being said, I, I tell them, don't be afraid to try, if you're interested in being an electrician, think about this, all those classes that you take turn into college credits. So I always tell them, even if college is not for you, it may not, but you're still getting that education, on-the-job training, at the same time. If you decide, when you become a journey person, you don't this apprenticeship program, you wanna be an engineer, guess what? You can take those credits and go, but guess what, you're also making enough money to go back to school, so you can take those classes, so you can advance your career into being an engineer. So it, it's from both sides, you know, it's, it's, everybody has to have skin in the game, so, and, and it takes patience, definitely takes patience, so.
One common theme I think we're saying here is that whatever background you have, even if you don't see how it applies to whatever field you're going to go into, it probably does. Because learning this skill, and then applying it over to your, to this other job that now you've become passionate about, ninety-nine percent of the time, it is applicable, it's just, you might not see it until you're doing it.
You see someone that has a computer, oh, I'm a computer major, da, 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 do programming, and things like that. Why would I go into a field of finance? Well, you get there and you realize their whole system sucks, and it's, it's old, and then you become that tech, and you don't even realize, it's like, you know, I came in here, you know, and I was gonna be a clerk, but now I've created this whole new position. I've created this job in this company, so, it, you know, that could be the case, and you can't, you can't shut your doors. And that's the problem we have as women, we shut our doors, we say, okay, you know what, I'm doing this, this, and this, that means I can't do that. Well, who says you can't do that? Can't you chew gum and walk at the same time? So, why can't you do that, you know, so? Don't shame us for chewing gum and walking. We are women, we are, we are, it's embedded in our DNA to multitask. So with that, use that, that's a skill, you know, never doubt that skill. I'm forty-three, I'm still doing fifty million things I want, and I'm like, oh, I know how to change, you know, and people say, oh, this, so you know what? I have no problem changing my oil, I know how to do that, I know how to change it. But I have the luxury of saying, I'm gonna take it developmentally, let them do it. But again, you have to know that you can do it, you know, so, it's the options, know that you have options, know you have choices, don't close those doors.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all this morning for coming to join us. I'm gonna invite the, the ladies in the room to, um, if our panelists are willing to hang around for a couple of minutes, um, ask any other questions that you might have, we follow up on a tip that they gave. Um, but we first want to just give them a thank you gift from the commission for taking your time out and sharing your advice and your stories with us.
That's good, thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And if you are interested in the engineering, one of our panelists does have, had a, she has another commitment, so she has to go, but I think she has some cars to charlie out. Great, well, thank you again, and thank you all for joining.